It's election season for city government and you want to cast an informed vote. One Ogden is here with the voices and faces of the people stepping up to represent you. John Thompson is a candidate for Ogden City Council at-large seat A.
I was born in New York and grew up in New Jersey, northern Jersey. I've heard two stories. My dad was either laid off or the latest story I heard is that he wasn't really laid off. He was just offered a job out at Thiaqal if he wanted to still stay with whoever he was with. They were making the solid propellant fuel for the Minuteman missile and stuff. And so he said, if you want to go to Utah, you can stay with us, but you'll have to travel out west. This is 1961. So at 12 years old, we immigrated out to Brigham City. It was a culture shock mainly from my mom. Both my mom and dad are New Yorkers. And so with mom though, you know, a four-story building in Brigham City, no trees, water irrigations going down the sidewalk, going from Germans and Jews and Puerto Ricans and Catholics and everybody else and you know, that make up the United Nations in the neighborhood I grew up, which I thought was of course, normal and that every kid grew up with blacks, to Brigham City where it was, everybody was white except for the kids you would see across the street in the Indian school at the time. I thought the eye on the side of the mountain was very cool. I said, I guess that's why they put the Indian school here. So after mom came out for a month, we had a house. Dad did buy a house there, but nothing, just bare dirt and no lawn, no trees. Had a Thiaqal picnic at Lagoon and somebody told my dad that this house was on the market. So on the way back from Lagoon, we swung by here and he said, love, would you mind living here? A little bit bigger city, some buildings, you know, even 12 feet, 12 stories high. And dad said he wouldn't mind traveling up to, I'm not sure if he worked in Brigham City. I thought he worked more so at The Plant, which is maybe 10 miles out north there. But dad said he didn't mind. So we bought this house, they bought it, we moved down here late August, early September because I started eighth grade that week we moved here, Central Junior High.
So you've been in this house the whole time, pretty much?
I have lived here or stayed here or I have owned it since about 84, I think. Bought it from my dad after mom died.
Wow, that's pretty incredible.
Yeah, so for 64 years now, one way or the other, I've been coming up to this property. And this is the kids home. I'll get there before the other question, but Marine Corps, enjoyed the Marine Corps, came back, went to Weber State, got the degree. I say on the campaign trail, I make the joke, I think it's cheesy, but the wife loves it, that all my Mormon friends from high school went on their two-year mission, or a lot of them did. And so I was the lone kid out there and nobody to supervise me. So I majored in the fraternity and minored in the sorority, but I'm still married to her. So I said, to mature and grow up and maybe decide what I really wanted to do, my older brother suggested I put myself up for the draft. I didn't want to be drafted in the Army, even though an older brother was a soldier. I was just always interested in the Marine Corps. So I enlisted in the Marine Corps. Did those three years and came back and said, since I settled up, I thought it would be good to get a commission with a, you know, second lieutenancy behind me for the resume and then come back and work for the First Security Bank again, who I was working for. But we enjoyed it again when I went back in. So we made the career about it. So that's why I stayed in, became a career.
Really? So how many years are we talking?
Off and on, counting active reserve and inactive reserve, but 26 or so, basically 67 to 93.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And so, and then like.
But, sorry. So basically this was always home. When the kids or something, this is where we would come back. And that's one reason I bought it. I always have very fond memories of the place, even though it's a money pit. And the older I get, the bigger the house gets as well as the yard, but it's still what I consider home. So that's why I've always stayed here, use this as a, we'd say militarily, the base of operations has been 1506.
Yeah. And so were you doing other work, was it security? Like were you doing other work while you were not, you know, active?
Basically, when I got back out and went back to school, I still worked for First Security Bank. The wife was not too appreciative because supposedly as a veteran, I could have gotten, you know, I was making a dollar fifty an hour or whatever it was in the early seventies whereas I would have made three bucks or five bucks an hour out at BDO that was there. But I liked the people, I had freedom to do what I want. It was basically an eight to five job down there. You from Ogden? So you know where the old Grand Central was? You know where the Utah and Idaho, it used to be a map building on 27th and Washington? Okay, where the post office is?
Yeah.
That, that was the Grand Central. Well, right on the other, on the north side of that, which you could enter from either Washington Boulevard, because that was a drive-in branch of the bank there on Washington, or you could come in off of 27th Street. That's where the warehouse was behind that, in that parking lot back there. So that was the warehouse and I was basically in charge of the warehouse for, for a security corporation, which we sent out bank supplies to Utah and Idaho for security banks. So that's what I just, I just stayed with them for three years until I graduated and went back into the Marine Corps when I took the commission.
Yeah. So. And so, talk about how you think that all of that background maybe ties into, you know, city government?
Would that be question two here? Okay, well, I'll start with the education first. Ogden High, 66. And then ended up with the five degrees, I say, associate degree, majored in history, minored in police science. At times called criminal something or other now. And then I have two masters, one in human relations and one in management that I picked up when I was stationed in Denver through Webster University. In addition to military schools, some of them were nine months long, some of them were just a week or two, depending on what it was. Plus the associated responsibility and duties that went along with promotions. So I have that experience, which I think is, would be beneficial to me in terms of the way I look at something and you know, think this, this is the job and we're going to get it done. The Ed Harris line in Apollo 13, failure's not an option type of thing. That's what we're supposed to do, that's what we're going to do. So I will take that as the professional and the educational background that I think would be beneficial. I mean, you go with what's familiar to me and that's what's familiar to me. So that's where I'd go. I also worked part-time when I first retired for, as a collection guy, place called SPS in Leighton. But then after that and a stint out at the Rite Aid Warehouse, I got on with the state in child support collection, Office of Recovery Services. So always been kind of conscious of tax dollars, especially in retired from the state. Was with them for 15 years and collecting child support and that. And so, yeah, with that background.
Pretty broad experience.
Yeah.
So what are some of the issues that you think deserve more attention than they're getting right now in Ogden?
Uh, that, that is a, that is a big question because one of the things, I don't have any, any handouts now or anything. One, it's going up to the primary. Two, I'm a terrible candidate. Three, I generally have always funded my candidacies out of my own pocket. I don't accept and have not taken donations to do that. So I like the set up the table type thing and have people come to you because that's the way you hear of what is on people's mind versus the issues that I'm running on, which some are generally what I see and some that are, and especially this time, which I decided to run again, are personal issues. I'll give you one or both or.
Sure.
Okay. So the big issues I hear from the Tuesday night meeting at the library was housing, that always comes up. Taxes that even though the city did not raise the taxes for this latest budget, they just approved one July. And to a degree transparency are the issues that they want to talk about. I, I, hopefully I wasn't rude, but when the forum we had, which is where the legal women voters ask the candidate the questions and then you just have the minute, minute and a half or so to reply and that goes very fast. What are you going to do for either affordable housing or housing or shelter or numerous, what they're talking about, the homeless? And I just wanted to be, I was frustrated because I would get that question every time, this was my answer, every time I ran for a city office, be it mayor or council seat, I would get that question. And my answer was, full disclosure, I really haven't studied that. I'm not that aware of it. I know it, I don't see to me many homeless people, at least the way I travel around the city. And if it is something that the people, the citizens of Ogden really think it's a problem and they want the city to handle it, then that's what they should make known. And then the city should consciously, if want, if they want to get into the housing business, make that effort to get into the housing business. Whatever it means, I see all these apartments and complexes going up. I don't know, excuse me, if they're city sponsored or just approved and it's purely a personal or a private development or be it condos or be it low income or whatever they are. I'm just saying, if that's what you want the city to do and think it should be a city handled problem, then be prepared to pay for it and we could then solve the problem. I don't think there are any problems that are not solvable. I'll tell you that, no matter what it is. You can always get something. I believe in the Einstein thing, that one filament doesn't work, you know it doesn't work and so now you try something else. But you do something, you be proactive in that regard and you don't let it just fester and compound and get worse. Another issue along that line is the city maintenance thing. They had the Marcy car, you had the buildings of Union Station. The philosophy is just, we cannot raise taxes. We can't, well, that's what government is for. That's the way government operates. I hate that thing with saying either Mitt Romney or Donald Trump, I'm a businessman and I'm rich and therefore I can run the government that way. Two entirely different animals. You like talking plants and animals, it's two different systems. So if you want that and you want it done well, you're probably going to have to pay for it. And if that's what you want them to do. The city, I would say 80% of what the city does is not required by law. So if you want to take some of that stuff that's not required and now put it in some other stuff that you think is more important and a higher priority, then that's what we can do. That's why you elect the people that think like that or after they get elected, you tell them, this is what I want you to look into and this is what I want you to solve. Another issue would be transparency, not so much under the current administration, but the previous two administrations. One with Mayor Godfrey, you had the 21st Street Pond. And he supposedly made a contract on his own with Mr. Good. And so you have very limited public access. There's now a movement afoot to try to redo that agreement and get it to public access, that it's cleaned up or get it cleaner so people if not can fish and water ski or whatever and swim in it, they can do whatever they, it's going to be environmentally safe to do there. Another thing under Caldwell was the wildlife rehab center that they tore down. And the answers we always got, but never in writing was, hey, that's the mayor's, the mayor has that authority. He can get rid of any city property he wants. Well, and what I've seen, he does that based on the rules and the parameters that the council sets for him to do that. He just cannot sell and it just doesn't make sense that any mayor or governor, anybody can sell any state or federal property that they want just by being the executive. Does that really make sense? I mean, just look at it common sense wise. He can't do that. So in that regard, as I would be on the council, I would say, yeah, that's not, we don't agree with that. And if the needs be, we'll change the ordinance. You can't do that unless you get our permission. You certainly should have notification of it, that the mayor is looking to do this, whatever mayor it was. And then if we agree, we agree. If we don't agree, we make an ordinance saying, you can't do that, Mr. Mayor. No, we don't agree with that. We don't think that's in the public interest. So whether that's the same thing now with Wonder Block, but you know, somebody in the group I was with the other day said, yeah, technically Ben could sell City Hall if he wanted to. I said, really? Does that really make sense? Is that, would you really? You know, if Jeff Bezos came knocking on the door and said, I'd give you a billion dollars for that, would you really go along with that? Yeah, so that, that would be an issue, that's a personal issue. Another personal issue I have is the city, I've always heard, have friends with a restaurant that just opened, reopened, that it's hard to do business with Ogden. Now that to me comes from, I guess, small, if not also medium-sized businesses, not necessarily big businesses because they have the money and the stuff to, maybe they don't get as hard a time as these other businesses. But when you go there and say, this is what I, I want to open this restaurant and they tell you what you need to do and you get those things done and go back to get the approval and now they say, oh, but you also have to do this and this and this. And that happens time after time and after time. That to me is unacceptable. I would like to leave office if I get elected to where that last two years, I don't hear, it's hard to do business with Ogden. You have two different offices within the same department that have two different interpretations of the rules on that. And that's where a personal issue I'm dealing with. One says somebody can do something, the other group says, no, you can't do that. That's not what the ordinance says. They're not talking to each other. If you want to do business with Ogden, when you tell them what you have from whatever you're starting with, whether it's building it from the ground up or remodeling it or reconfiguring it to go from a restaurant to a retail store or back again, you should be able to go in within a half a day and get everything that you need to do on a, it's like flying a plane. I don't care if it's your first flight or your last flight. You use a checklist. That's what you do. Soli Solenberger, every little guys, that's what they have, called laptop. You put it on your thigh and you check it. No matter how often you do that, you, you check off everything. Flaps, engines, same thing here. If you want to do that business, you ought to have that. Regardless if it's coming from the zoning people or the planning people or the fire department or the police department, they should have one place you go to where you get all of that at the same time and everybody agrees what has to be done to what standard. And if you have that done and you go in and show them that or they come out and inspect it, it's signed off and you get your license and you open your business. So I'll leave it with that.
Yeah. And I might have answered this one a little bit, but.
I could go.
Yeah, when you, when you picture yourself having an impact on government, like what kind of things are that? Like how do you, how do you see government being a tool?
I picture myself, there's a, we had a saying in the Marine Corps, well, we had many sayings in the Marine Corps, some I won't say here. But two of the ones that have always stuck with me because they were some of the best leaders I've ever worked for. One is balanced excellence. That was his goal. You had some groups that, you know, just concentrated, let's say you were in an infantry unit. And so all you had to do was make sure you could move and shoot and that's it. He didn't care about admin that much, he didn't care about the logistics, he wouldn't worry about that, he wouldn't worry about this and that. My guy can, we're going to be the best field Marines in the Marine Corps and that's what they concentrated on. The, the group and the, what I support and my boss says, no. I said, we're, we're supposed to be good at everything that we do. So it's supposed to be a balanced excellence across the board. Whether it be administrative stuff and doing reports, whether it being cutting the grass, whether it being, making sure we know what's being cooked in the mess hall and that, no matter what it is, we should have that level of standards and we don't go against the people or a group or a person. You go against the standards that are set for that particular area or occupation. That's what you measure yourself against. You have the minimum and then you strive to get as bits and do as well as you can do and hopefully a higher, i.e. an excellent level, being outstanding was the best and excellent. If you can get outstanding, great, but we want our standard to be excellence. So that's where we want. The other saying, what was the other saying? I forgot, it'll come to me. But so in that regard of the military side, that's what I would look at that. Me, for instance, I don't know about developing. Oh, I know what it was. The standard would be, or the saying would be, if you do the little things, that the unglamorous things, if you want to be more of the tugboat than the showboat, the bigger things a lot will take care of themselves because you have done the little things, the things that people don't see, the things that are done behind the scene, the non-glamorous stuff, the stuff that's not going to make the front page of the newspaper. So if you do that, so that's where I would look. I don't know about building, I don't know about development, I don't know about real estate. That's why I say in the housing, I don't know. I would ask on the development side from like 2000 on, all those development projects Ogden would be involved in, I would ask to say, get a list of what was the expectation, what did it cost us? And if the projects are done, has it met expectations? The Junction, the other apartment complexes that we were involved in, the housing, the mixed-use part, has that mixed-use really turned out to be good with residential and office space and retail space and stuff? Has that been good content? I go down to the Junction, I like movies, I go to movies a lot. I see, and basically New Gate and the Junction, see a lot of closed shops. I don't know if that's a bigger picture economically or not. So I, that part I can't answer. I can do the smaller things in terms of what people are not interested in. If you see a report on Ogden, you see all the good stuff. Great weather, some water, good snow, beautiful scenery, hiking trails, whatever. You ever see the crime report? Even though say they, people say Marcia White said crime has dropped, we had a question like that and said it's been coming down, which is great. I didn't, I don't dispute that, but is it dropping down enough? And are you concentrating on the crime areas that are problem areas and are we working on those? That's what I would like to work on. I think the water, I had another personal issue with the city was the enterprise fund transfer. Seven million dollars? If you get an Ogden utility bill, you had that notice in there. I was gone back to the East Coast, so I wasn't here for the public hearing. But I have always objected to them transferring enterprise funds to the general fund. They changed the law, the state did, so the cities can do that now. But on principle, I'm just opposed to that. That, you know, the money that we pay for garbage, refuge, water, sewer and storm drain on our water bill basically is what it is. And if they have an extra seven million dollar surplus, they shouldn't be allowed to put it into the general fund. If it's a courage thing that you don't want to raise taxes, stand up and say that. But don't transfer that here because now you're telling me I'm paying more for what that service, the enterprise, water, providing water is costing. Those services should be charged at a fee for what the service costs in addition to some other profit margin for operations and maintenance or even going into a rainy day fund or something. They should be using it for the water line instead of bonding for the new water line coming down the canyon and the replacement of the line that's under Pine View. So that's where I think that money should go for, rather than bonding and paying whatever the interest rate is, no matter how good the loan terms were. But that's what I don't. They might have gave a better explanation on why they wanted to do it this way. I called them up and tried to get explanation, but it was a little bit over my head. But again, on the principle, those type of things on the budget. So I would look like, I would try to get into the weeds that people, you know, don't get into or don't find that glamorous and that's where I would like to concentrate my efforts on it. Not ignoring the other ones, still being involved and participate in those, but as a member of the council, that's where at least I would start out my term of office in that area.
Are there community members, organizations that you think are doing valuable stuff around here?
I, I know there are. The YCC, any food banks, anybody that wants to help people, I think I give kudos to. I think the city made a mistake. I didn't go to the hearing on it, but over the Aspen House issue, if you're familiar with that. And the main reason I heard is that somebody and apparently most of the council agreed that they didn't want another type of facility like that in this neighborhood. So even though the supposedly the people in that neighborhood down there, right on Madison, didn't object to it. In fact, they supported it from what I understand, from the council member of that district, whatever that district was. I'm assuming it was three, I'm not sure. So those, those type of good things for Ogden, in that, in that vein, I am, have always been in the minority in terms of when you are a voting member of a legislative body, that do you vote the way your constituents, meaning the people that can vote for you, want you to vote? Or are you supposed to vote for the body politic as a whole?
Yeah.
And to me, it has always been the second one. Even though somebody can't vote for you, if you're a district member, council member, your vote still affects everybody else in the other three districts. So, and even as a district member, you should still have the priority to vote first, what is good for Ogden overall, not what is maybe detrimental or. Everybody appreciates and acknowledges people that make sacrifices. But when your turn comes to make a sacrifice, then now like, whoa, 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 whoa. I think this is very, very old news. Mayor Godfrey, when he wanted to put his gondola in, and I don't know if you were here during that time and that, and I, I was a little receptive to that idea. Not really too much opposed one way or supportive one way or the other. But I think he went about it the wrong way and as I remember it, basically it was the people in the this district, whatever it was, District Four, on the East Bench that rose up and revolt and really blocked that and said, that's not going to happen. I'm not going to have a gondola going over my backyard or looking into my bedroom on that. Versus what the other three districts, you know, felt that would it have been that good, beneficial for Ogden, especially in the long-term? Wherever it would have been, ended up going up there. Now there are other problems of course with Snow Basin and Mr. Holding and Bureau of the Forest Service and that also had. But I think in terms of the council, I think he could have done a better job in trying to get the majority of the council to support it as good for Ogden as a whole. And that's the way I would also look at any type of policy or thing that comes up first, regardless of what, in my case, it doesn't matter because I'm in that large seat anyway.
But it also, I mean, it seems like you are a member of a fair amount of organizations that keep you pretty well informed.
Yeah, and that's part of it. That's why, that's where I stay informed. I'm terrible on the computer, I'm trying to get this face page thing going. In fact, that's my goal today after this, I'm going to try to put some comments on it from my meet the candidate things on that. So that's a acknowledged weakness, I admit, fully admit to. And so in terms of the doing the good though, I also would, would say there's to me a little disconnect because they say Utahns, and I've heard at least once, Ogdenites are very charitable and supportive and, you know, help their neighbors and stuff. But it surprises me that if you look in the Weekend Standard, you'll see that a good half-page of volunteer organizations looking for volunteers. So if, if we are that good, somewhere there's a disconnect, I think there with all those, and a lot of them are good, to me, good organizations to be supportive of, that, you know, try to help out the community and stuff. School help programs, anything helping a kid to read, to do better in school, I think I would support. So yeah, those things I think are good. Yeah, my interests lie in other areas. I'm a member of the Golden Vets at the Senior Center, I do that. And two political groups and coffee groups and, you know, we discuss things. Granted, it's a much more older mindset, the group I hang out with. Granted, it's a much more older mindset, the group I hang out with, but we've seen stuff, so we can, we can speak from experience a little bit.
Right.
Hopefully, we're getting up to that wisdom stage now.
Yeah, it sounds valuable.
Yeah, yes, sir, yep.
Yeah. What about, uh, local businesses? Are there any, you know, favorite places you like to go, even, uh, services, artists, any stuff like that?
Yes, again, again, uh, I, I am a supporter of Union Station, and specifically the Browning Gun Museum, for one. Uh, I like the movies, as I mentioned before, so I like the big screen stuff, so it's basically the Junction and the, the Tinto Town one at, at, uh, New Gate Mall. The restaurants I like, uh, the wife and I are big fans of Rainbow Gardens, uh, that restaurant. Uh, we also do a lot of them, try to support Happy Hours, so we go, uh, we like Bout Time and New Gate Mall. Uh, we like, uh, Wingnuts there at the Junction, uh, like the Lighthouse, uh, Harp and Hound, uh, Two Bit Bistro, uh, and, uh, what's the one down the street there? Angry Goat.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, we like there, and, uh, if you're not familiar with the Marine Corps, we have our two hundred and fiftieth anniversary this year, and one of the reasons, half jokingly, but also serious, is that one of the reasons I joined was because they were founded in a bar. They were founded in a place called Ton Tavern in Philadelphia. And so, you gotta join a place that was founded in a bar.
Yeah.
It had two hundred and fifty years of continuous and honorable service to the country. Uh, so, uh, well, I'm, I'm not really a shopper, I appreciate my Smiths and my Fresh Market down the street, uh, I do like to get the food there. So in terms of that type of consuming, but I am a, I am a consumer in regard to the, uh, more fast food than I probably should eat, and, and cold beverages, but, so, those type of places I like. Fan of Weber State, like football, uh, like the Raptors game, a good deal, I was there Sunday afternoon. And we, and the Weber Historical Society, great organization, and run by the history department up there, have meetings during the school year, once a month, and.
They do? What do they, what do you do in the meetings there?
Uh, they usually have, uh, sometimes if it's a guest speaker, it could be a professor from Weber State, or, or the U, or BYU, or it could be an out-of-state person, but they generally go, uh, first Monday?
So it's like an opportunity to learn history?
Yeah, they, they do it in the, uh, Room 101 at the Link West Hall there, in the Social Science Building, uh, named after a classmate, by the way.
Nice.
Uh, Johnny, so, uh, yeah, so it, it very, uh, and the thing that I like about them is because when I read the subject, they put it out each, they put it out for fall quarter on that, and then they do it for January, February, March, maybe April, whatever, the four months. And they, so they come out with a sheet, and the ones that I don't think are that would be that interesting, because it's in competition with Monday Night Football, make Green Bay fan, have to admit that. Those, those are the ones that I usually find the most interesting. So, two, couple of them were, you know, the, the Georgia senator that supposedly said the Civil War would only, wouldn't, wouldn't, the blood spilt wouldn't fill up a handkerchief.
Oh.
And that was given by one of my favorite history teachers, Dr. Roberts, who has since passed away, was great. There was one they just had over, uh, Buffalo Bill Cody, and, uh, his connection with the Mormons, and trying to get a, uh, settlement going up in Wyoming somewhere. That was very interesting, uh, type one. Uh, you, every election year, Leah Murray from Political Science will come in after the election and give a general synopsis of what happened, and why, and who voted for what, and that, and those are always well attended.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I, I look forward to that part and, and engagements, and.
I wonder how you keep, like, I feel like I don't see a lot of that stuff on social media, but I take it you don't really hear about that stuff on social media, where do you, like, hear about that stuff?
Pony Express. I get it through the mail.
Really?
That's why I don't like getting stuff on the email, I don't like sitting down in front of the computer. And so, uh, and people say go paperless, I mean, I heard it going paperless in the Marine Corps in nineteen eighty, there was a big thing here, they were gonna do away with record books and consolidated admin. And I would have all this more time for training, instead of doing this paperwork crap. And it just has never worked out. To me, if anything else, we've got, they just gave you more to do. It was a, it was counterproductive in regard to what your job was, which, if you're not at war, you're training for war. That, that's what your job is, if you're, especially in infantry, or if you're a pilot or whatever, that's what you're supposed to do. So, that thing going paperless, or I, I'm still not gonna go paperless, because I'm gonna keep a copy of it. So I, the paper's coming from me, send it to me in the mail. Uh, I've gotten used to some bills now I don't get, like, uh, my credit card bill, I gotta make a conscious note if I don't remember to write it down in my calendar to, you know, pay the Visa bill on the sixth of the month, and stuff. I like my Ogden City Water Bill every month. The mail I look at, the email I don't necessarily look at. And a lot of stuff, I may not even know what I'm looking at. You know, the, basically the way the title is, or what you're seeing, so I may not recognize it and just automatically delete it.
Yeah.
And some might go to spam.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I'm just, I have, if it wasn't for my son, who's luckily, the two daughters live out of state, that the son lives a block and a half away, and the granddaughter, to help me on the email part, as well as to get my TV working, so I can see the cable channels.
Yeah, he might be running it all.
I, I, I would really just be sitting here, yeah. I'd be that old guy on the top of the mountain, saying, what's, you know, when somebody gets up, what's the purpose of life?
That's a good campaign.
Beats me.
Turn it forward, make people journey up.
Yeah, so that, that's where I get my coffee group guys, and that's what I like. I've always enjoyed not being the smartest guy in the room. I like being around smart people, as well as I, I, I'm around, but I've always been around intelligent people, that, hard workers, whether they went to, you know, school or not, but most of the time, you know, that's why I get at least a high school grad, so nothing absolutely against them, but they're hard workers. I, I saw a saying the other day, I said, a, a definition of a patriot is somebody that will help their neighbor. And I think there's a lot of truth to that. So, and I, I love the country, and obviously twenty-six years in the Marine Corps, uh, I have my own definition of patriotism, and what makes a good citizen, and I, I, I do know being involved is a part of a criteria, but I also know, you know, my son, who's one of the, the younger person, and a young family, that, you know, you, you have other things on your mind. You can't always be available and know what's going on at the city, or the county, or the state level. He's a, he's a podcast listener, so, uh, and he did a lot more listening when he had work, luckily he works from home now, but when he worked in Salt Lake, you know, he would get a lot of that for that two-hour commute, unfortunately, up and back, so that's where he would hear, that's where he would get his news. It wouldn't mean he was involved, but at least he was aware of what was going on. And the wife, and she, she's a part-time, uh, teacher's aide, so she has the summer off with the daughter on that, so they get that. So I like, I like to be aware and, and around people that not necessarily have my experience and, uh, like, life experience and work experience that I had, and have their different viewpoints. And so, I've always enjoyed that. I don't have any problem at all just sitting at the back of the room in the corner or something, and just listening to conversations going on, so. And it's not to be, I don't, I have no desire to be on Jeopardy, I'd just like to be informed and educated, learn new stuff.
All right, thank you.
Go to oneogden.com to view written responses to candidate questionnaires from all the municipal candidates we've interviewed, and to find interviews from other candidates in Ogden, North and South Ogden, and Roy. Please share our interviews with your friends and encourage them to cast an informed vote, and subscribe to the One Ogden Podcast to hear all the other Ogden stories we've been digging up.